It's four o'clock, March 14th. Just near St. Patrick's Day, three days away. And I'll call it, it means order of the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the invocation. And after the invocation will... Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Whatever you want. Want to pray?
That's what makes it so much fun.
Do whatever you say. Okay, Commissioner Duran check. Duran check.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Here.
Coonan. Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Herrick. All members present.
Okay, let's try this again. Please stand for the invocation and after the invocation we'll have a moment of silence for Mr. Doug Luzeck. He's the husband of Clerk Cindy Luzeck.
Almighty God, we ask that you bless this session of the county commission today. Give to its members the courage of their own convictions so that they might work for the common good of all with the strength of confidence placed in them by election to office. May your divine providence guide our county and bring dignity, prosperity, respect, and order to every citizen. Amen.
so we can skip that. Next on the agenda is citizen input. Anyone from the audience who'd like to speak, please step forward, state your name, and enjoy.
Keith Markstrom, president of Bay Veterans Foundation. I thought I would come today and give you an update on Battery Park Phase One and then talk to you very briefly about next project that we're going to be looking at doing in the park. You have a packet in front of you. The first picture are the major elements that are Phase One included. Pictures of the mortar can, the benches, the dogging can, and the kiosk. Besides those landscaping and the sidewalks was the Phase One of the project. As you recall, it was a partnership between this body, city, the library system, and Bay Veterans Foundation. I'm pleased to tell you that we're about 98 percent complete. The only thing that we have to do is install plaques on the two can and the kiosk, and they're here, but wait for warmer weather. And the other is donor names to be placed in one of the panels in the kiosk, and those are underway as we speak. We also owe the county yet for some materials. John Morris and his group did a wonderful job. I can't say enough about the fellows that provide a lot of labor, which was part of our agreement. But then we also had some of those fellows come in on their own time on Saturday and after work so that they could complete the sidewalks and the base for the can and so on and so forth. We'll square up with John's department within the next month or so. I think it's a couple hundred dollars. Anyway, the agreement was that if the county provided certain materials, we would reimburse for that. So you'll get a full report on that when that's completed. Battery Park Phase Two. We talked with the city, and I think some of you are aware, that we were talking about closing Jefferson halfway and making parking in the northern half and then connecting the two north quadrants together by green space. But we also thought it would be nice if we had railroad tracks just this side of the center of Jefferson Avenue that would reflect the transportation system that was over 100 years ago that ran down Jefferson and onto Saginaw and into Detroit. And the symbolism that would be, it was not just transportation for anybody, but it held a lot of veterans back and forth after the Civil War, up through World War I and up until World War II. So when we start talking about putting some tracks in there, somebody suggested that maybe we should get a passenger railway car. So we're looking for that. So I'll be approaching the city to see where we're at as far as that closure. Certainly, I know there was some discussion with previous county executives, so I'm hoping that... in fact, Jim may have had some discussion regarding it, I'm not sure. I know it was not official planning at this point. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is the five pages, which starts with Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation. Bay Veterans Foundation has partnered with this foundation. Herschel Williams is, I think, 94 years old. He's the surviving, the last surviving Medal of Honor recipient from the Battle of Iwo Jima. He was a flamethrower. He would go in advance of rifle squads to burn out and place enemy. And for that, he was recognized for valor and honor above himself. His foundation placed a monument, and the pictures on the small card, and then there's pictures within that packet in West Virginia where he's from. And it recognized not the fallen, but the families of those who gave up their lives in combat initially, but now it's been expanded to anybody who has lost their lives on active Many times we forget the loss that these families experience is forever. There's a void that can never be filled. So we're partnering because he would like to see a monument of this nature in every 50, all 50 states. There's three in Ohio, there's several in Pennsylvania. I think there's 17 that have been erected in 30-some states, and there's another 39 projects underway, ours being the last one. We're calling this the Michigan Gold Star Families Memorial Monument because at this point it'll be the only one in Michigan. We would welcome another community to do this, but until then, we're going to call ourselves the Michigan Monument. We're under a campaign now to raise about $75,000, but we have the entire state to canvass. So we'll be sending letters out to various American Legion, VFW posts, all the other veteran service organizations. We have a groundbreaking schedule for April 29th at 3:00, and a dedication schedule for September 30th. You'll get more information on that. This monument is going to be placed in the northwest quadrant over by Rod Hillbrine's building. We're working with WTA, the O'Wigan Tinknell Architectural Firm, SME for Soil Composition, and McMillan Associates for some of the underground lighting and wiring, so on and so forth. So I just wanted to bring this group up to date as far as Phase One of Battery Park, what we're looking at doing in a Phase Two perhaps, but more importantly at this point, the monument. There's also in that packet, there's a history of the Gold Star, which goes back to World War I. That's when people would hang a Blue Star banner in their window, and if their loved one was killed, it would be changed to a Gold Star. And then there's a, and then through, it gives you a little history of how this kind of transitioned over to Gold Star Family. But also, the last two pages is an overview of our Bay Veterans Foundation, what we stand for, which is veterans helping, helping veterans help themselves. There's a lot of fragmented services out there where a lot of organizations try to give things to veterans, but we're trying to help them transform their lives and to be more productive. So be working with Bob on a couple of things. But I think most importantly is that you see what our purpose is, what our activities have been, and what they're going to be, because this is truly partnership within our entire community. Any questions, I'll be glad to respond.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yep, thank you, Mark. I know the intent of Battery Park and this side of town, with the style of monument that this is, and I'm not saying it wouldn't work here, was the other side of the river at Vet's Park considered a location?
No. No. Because the principals that had been working on Battery Park have made, were personally invited by Mr. Williams to participate. We had looked at, I should say yes, we did look the other side. We didn't look at Vet's Park. We looked at the Edson, because the Edson is named after Merritt Edson, who was also a Medal of Honor recipient from World War II. He's no longer with us. But we thought that that would be a nice partnership and a nice draw. But when we started to do investigation on soil, it's a brown field, it's a flood plain, no materials can be excavated and taken off-site. So in working with the Edson folks, Mike Caglinet signed off that we thought that this was the best place. It's going to be the most visible as well. So yeah, I backtrack on my statement.
No problem. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, just a quick sidebar. I got to watch Hapshaw Ridge this weekend, and he was a Medal of Honor winner. He's the first conscience, his objector is actually a true story. He saved 75 guys and never carried a rifle, never touched a rifle the whole time he was there. It was open-ala. Pretty interesting movie. A little bit glory at times, but that's how war is, I guess. Thank you.
Keith, I think this is, you guys have done a great job down there already, you know, what you do with this, and all the veterans organizations. It's phenomenal. I mean, this is a really, really special-looking memorial, you know. It's, I think, you know, I think it's great for Bay County, you know. Like you said, it's the first in Michigan. I mean, you know, you've done a lot to enhance this area, this off the front here already. Thank you. As you know, all you guys are doing great. Thanks again. One more thing, Keith.
Keith, I'd just like to also thank you for your leadership on behalf of so many of the projects you've been involved with and paying tribute to not only Bay County veterans, but veterans throughout the country and all the sacrifices they made to preserve our American way of life. Just want you to know, your efforts are not unnoticed or unrecognized and certainly not unappreciated.
Thank you. We've got a lot of folks who are working on this behind the scenes and off the front, so thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board of commissioners?
Mr. Herrick. My name is John Andrus. I live at Ironwood Condominiums in Hampton Township. Commissioners, today on your agenda is a very important appointment, and that I'm speaking about is the Bay Area Act Behavioral Health Authority. This organization is very important to our community, and I'm asking the commissioners today to consider reappointing incumbents, being Tom Ryder incumbent, incumbent James Anderson, incumbent Colleen Mallett, and incumbent Richard Gromosky. These people know what they're doing, they're experienced, and they do a good job. And I've been really proud to serve with them thus far. So I would ask that you keep that organization functioning well in our community and reappoint these incumbents today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board of commissioners? Seeing, we'll move into the regular order of business. First on the agenda, presentations, designation of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bay County Sevilla. Resolution number 2017-48. I need a motion, please.
Almo.
To support. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution 2017-48 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas child maltreatment is a national tragedy, cutting across racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic boundaries and endangering our most precious resources and greatest responsibility, our children. Whereas, it is disturbing to note that approximately 3 million children are reported abused and neglected in this country each year. And in Bay County alone, over 3,800 cases of child abuse were reported in 2015, up from 300, excuse me, 3,206 cases in 2014. And whereas, children have the right to be safe in their own homes and to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. Child abuse violates a child's dignity, security, vulnerability, and humanity. And whereas, we can all join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in Michigan by providing education, skills training, and support, by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive hereby designate the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bay County and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in supporting families with the goal of preventing child abuse, maltreatment, abuse, and neglect. And be it further resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and County Executive urge full support of the Can Council's mission to build communities where children are free from abuse and neglect. Sign Tom Herrick, Chair and Board.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like Ms. Vera Harrison, the Cape Program Director, please step forward and accept this proclamation.
Cost a buck to come through that gate.
Ms. Harrison, on behalf of the whole board and everybody in Bay County, actually, thank you for all you do. And I just wish you'd take a minute and just tell us a little bit more about, you know, what's your, the whole program and what goes on, because I don't think people really understand. They, we see in the paper once a while, we see some child abuse, we see, you know, bad things happen to the little guys, but there's a lot more to it than that.
Yes, it is. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and what we do is we're going to plant pinwheels out on Center Avenue, and we're also going to read the proclamation and have a little program. But just because April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, throughout the year, we try to prevent child abuse prevention through several programs. One of our big things that we have going on now in Bay County is we're offering parenting classes now. I actually have 23 parents that I work with every Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Bay ISD. So that's part of preventing child abuse and neglect. And so we do a lot of things like that in our community. But I do have a few flyers that I'll bring forward. But on the 31st of March, we'll be at the DHHS building at 11:30, and that's where we'll have our ceremony. And someone will read the child's prayer, and they'll also read this proclamation.
What's the address of that building? Where's it at, exactly?
I can get the flyer, because it's the DHHS building.
Okay, that's okay. But that's on March 31st, correct?
Yes.
At 11:30?
Yes.
Okay, it'd be perfect. Commissioner Lutz, did you have a question?
I think in Hampton Township.
Oh, the DHHS office?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's in Hampton Township at the old mall.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, we got it. So anyone out there, if you're available, March 31st, 11:30, it's the pinwheel time. That's when you know when you see the pinwheels around town, that's from this program, Prevent Child Abuse.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, MSU Extension Agriculture and Agribusiness Institute Greening Michigan Institute Sea Grant. A motion received, it's in order. Oh, we've got more people.
Okay, Diane Smith, the district coordinator for MSU Extension. What I thought we would do is quarterly throughout the year, just bring staff in, kind of remind you of what they do, what their positions are. So I'd like to start out with a new staff member that we have replacing Katie Hinson. So it's Kip Kronk, he's the new Michigan Sea Grant Extension educator. And Kip comes to us with a master's degree in environmental studies and resource management. So Kip came to Bay City in 2004, or Bay County in 2004, and since then, he's been working to protect the Saginaw Bay and its watershed through a position in MDEQ, as well as the Saginaw Bay Invasive Species Resource Management Area. So in this position, I'm going to have him just go ahead and talk about what his goals will be throughout this first year. And then following him will be Frank Gublow, and he can talk about his position as a partnership between MSU and MSU's Product Center.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Kip Kronk. Like you said, I brought some packets about Sea Grant for the board. If anyone else would like one of those packets, let me know, and I can get it to you. Just in the packet, it has information about Sea Grant in general, what we do. Sea Grant's a unique part of Michigan State Extension because we're in partnership with the University of Michigan as well. And our goal's to protect the Great Lakes. There's information in there about an upcoming fisheries workshop that's going to be in Bay City at the Baker Township Hall. I think it's towards the end of April. So if people are interested in that, we'd like to get people to attend that meeting. And then there's a business card, if you have any questions for me. There's also a copy of our most recent magazine about Sea Grant and what we do in the state of Michigan to help out protecting the Great Lakes. A couple of the projects that I'm working on currently is, one of them is kind of my little pet project. We're trying to put together an invasive species summer camp at the Bay City State Recreation Area. We're working with the DNR, we're working with the Friends Group. What this would do is we'd bring 10 to 15 high school-age students together for a week at the park. They would actually camp out there, and they would learn about invasive species management. It's, this would be our first year. Eventually, as it gets going better, we're hoping that it would attract, we'd get maybe 20 to 30 students a summer is what we would do. So it's a neat opportunity to actually get out here to the bay and talk about invasive species and what they can do. And part of that camp is having, we'll have the students go back to their homes and hopefully be able to take invasive species management back with them. And that'll be open to students throughout the watershed. Another project that we're working on is called a runoff risk tool. And what this is, it's a tool that we're putting together, an advisory tool for farmers, so that it'll help them make the best choices when applying manure to their fields. So they'll do a seven-day forecast, they'll give them a text on their phone if it's not a good day to apply their manure. So hopefully, we're going to reduce the nutrient loading in the Saginaw Bay through that tool. And then the last one that I wanted to talk about is the Coastal Storms Project. Katie was here, she did a survey throughout the watershed, asking communities about how prepared they were for coastal storms, big rain events, or floods, or windstorms, something like that. So my part in the project now will be doing outreach and education. So we'll be working with communities throughout the watershed to provide them tools on stormwater management, green infrastructure, and then reducing the risk for bigger storms. So if you get a big storm event, not everything washes off, you can hold some of the water back, and that way reducing the flooding. So that's another educational outreach topic of mine that I'll be working on in the next few years, hopefully.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yep. Good to see you again.
Yep.
Now would probably be a good time to talk again about the camp that you're trying to put together, dealing with invasive species, and the fact that you could be using, looking for some volunteers. So if you want to expand on that a little bit, you know, with Bay TV, you never know who you might get a phone call from.
Right. So one of the things with the camp is that we need chaperones or volunteers to help us with the students while they're there. So we're looking for two to six volunteers that would like to be at the camp, they would be there, it's the 17th through 20th of July, and they would be camping with the students out there at the Bay City Recreation Area at their group campground. And so they would kind of just help us oversee, and then we have a bunch of staff from different organizations that will actually be doing the instructing during the day.
And who could they call?
They can get ahold of me, here at the Michigan State Extension Office.
Or possibly George.
Or they can call George and Valerie the Park. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan.
You mentioned, the last thing you mentioned was some ability to hold stormwater back. Is that just something you're talking about, or is this something you're able to do now?
Well, what we're hoping is that we can provide communities with tools to, some of it goes through planning, to allow green infrastructure, so that you, when you're designing a parking lot or designing a road, that you put swales and stuff in there that can actually hold water back during a rain event. Other things as well, we're hoping to do a summit this fall, working with the Eastern, East Michigan Council of Governments, and bring a bunch of people from different units of government in the watershed together to talk about different ways to do this, and actually get out on a tour and show them some things that have actually happened on the ground already.
So is it just under new construction, or can you use an existing area and build some sort of swales to do?
You could do both. So just a little quick example, it's like a rain garden. So if you have an area where you have a downspout, if you put a rain garden there, it actually absorbs the water instead of just running off and causing runoff event.
Does the county have any land that would be suitable for that?
I think most land would be suitable for it, one way or another. And one other thing, you know, talking about green structures, like green roofs and all that kind of stuff as well, things that, anything that's going to help you hold water back during a rain event.
So you're just at a talking stage, or are we in the doing stage?
This is an educational phase, so that we'd be working with communities to help them look for opportunities to do this.
I think the county would be a good opportunity to get rolling what you want to start doing. I'm sure we've got some land somewhere that we can lead by example, because keeping the lakes clean is should be everybody's main objective.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm willing to meet with whoever, and we can talk about it, because one of the things for the trip in the fall is trying to figure out if there's areas within the tri-cities where there's actual things like this that we can show people on the ground. So if we can get something here, that'd be great.
Commissioner Duran.
Thank you. With the proposed cuts that are coming via EPA and as the NOAA, you know, if there's these projects that you're talking about are under, are, is the NOAA overwritten? Are you concerned about the funding down the road? I mean, you gotta be, because it's...
It's a difficult time for many people that have federal funding. At this point, there's been a leaked memo talking about that Sea Grant will totally be cut in the budget.
So we need to have our people write and call and do whatever?
Yeah. Like all the things that we've done today, I think we do a lot of things to help coastal communities like Bay County. So any support about what we do at Sea Grant would be appreciated.
Right, your legislators' folks. It's a severe cut from, what, 300 million to 10 million or something?
That's the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. That's different funding than what Sea Grant is funded through. So it's two different things, so two different impacts to the Great Lakes if it happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there an extra packet? Did you see that?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Barcia. Thank you for the hard work that you all do in making, you know, good decisions for diverse and vibrant community. My name's Frank Gublow. I work with the Michigan State University Extension here in Bay County and in the region. Particularly what I do is related to the Michigan State University Product Center. The Product Center was established about 10 years ago on campus. It was the initiative of Dr. Chris Peterson. Dr. Peterson envisioned a way for the farm community to use the university to add, to provide educational opportunities so that they could add value to their farm products. And through that, the Product Center was established. It ended up, as many things do, with certain unintended consequences, but not bad, bad consequences. What the Product Center ended up becoming was a way for people who had lost their jobs or were, you know, took the buyout from automotive facilities and just general folks to find a way to start a business or to launch a food product in order to generate some income, either a very small, small portion of their income just to supplement the other things that they have going on, right on through to establishing a full-fledged business and making a new career out of, in the food industry. Particularly what we do is we help people flesh out the ideas that they have, you know, they have... they have a particular recipe that, that, you know, came, came through, down to them through their family, or they have some other idea about a food business. And we help them go through a process of determining, you know, is this really feasible, or is this just my good idea, but it, but it really can't be commercialized. And once we've, we've helped them through that process and they've decided that it's a good, a good thing to commercialize, you know, then what are the steps in terms of regulation and production and marketing and sales? You know, what are those steps and what, how, how can we help them? Well, at the Product Center, we have some specialized services available that helps people go take, take their recipe, commercialize it, and make it shelf-stable and safe. And safe for consumers to, to eat and enjoy. We also have developed some capacity to help people get into, into grocery store shelves. For instance, we're in the middle of a project right now with Spartan Nash Foods. They've asked us to go through our, our client database, and about, right now Spartan Nash is, is evaluating about 180 different products from, from folks around the state, including right here, Bay County and, and the Saginaw Valley. So that's, those are, those are two very tangible things that we're doing. Right now in Bay County, I've got a couple people specifically that I'm working with. One is a fellow who's in production already and making a snack food product, but he's doing it out here in county. He'd like to, he'd like to move closer to home. So we're looking into the possibility of trying to find him some low-cost space in a commercial kitchen so that he can make his product here in Bay County, as well as helping another, another food business work through the increased regulatory requirement brought on by the Food Safety Modernization Act of 2010. That regulation will cause a lot of our food manufacturing operations at all scales to increase the amount of paperwork and attention to the details of food safety as they make products on a day-to-day basis. And we're fully capable of helping them through, you know, through the, the education process so that they gain the capacity to make good and safe products for consumers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. Mr., I'll let the chairman do that.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. So if somebody has an idea that they think is marketable, how do they find you?
Sure. They can call. There's two ways. The, the most tech-savvy way would be to go to the, our webpage on campus, which is productcenter.msu.edu, that they can find me at the, through the Extension Office here.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we need a motion to receive.
Some vote.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we need, as a request for appointment to the Bay Aaron Act Behavioral Health Authority, I need a motion to receive the applications.
Some vote.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Bigg, or Sergeant Adams, we will need to have a vote on this. What's, what's, oh wait, wait.
Do they know how many to vote for?
Try me.
How many are they voting for?
We're voting for four, I believe. Yes.
Start today with Commissioner Coonan.
Carl Miller, Tom Ryder, Jim Anderson, Colleen Mallett.
Who was the last one?
Mallett. Got Miller, Ryder, Anderson, and Mallett. Okay. Ryder.
Ryder, Anderson, Mallett, and Gramoski.
And Lutz.
Ryder, Anderson, Mallett, and Gramoski.
Duran check.
Ryder, Anderson, Mallett, Gramoski.
Krieger.
Miller, Ryder, Anderson, Mallett.
Ryder, Anderson, Mallett, Gramoski.
And Chair Herrick.
Miller, Ryder, Mallett, Gramoski.
So I have Miller, three, Ryder, seven, Anderson, six, Mallett, seven, and Gramoski, five.
Let's do it again.
No, he's got the slashes. He's got the votes.
Yeah, he's got the five.
Total.
He's got any of these.
He's got any of these.
So we're looking at Ryder, Anderson, Mallett, and Gramoski.
Do we have to receive that?
We received it, you need a motion to appoint or reelect.
I need a...
Motion to reelect.
Like a motion to appoint the following people: Tom Ryder, James Anderson, Colleen, Mallett, and Richard Gramoski.
Some vote.
Four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the Beha-, Bay Aaron Act Behavioral Health Authority results a qualification review of the applicants. Any motion to receive?
Some vote.
Four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Melvin McNally requests for reappointment to the Region 7 Area on Aging Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
Motion to receive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Since Melvin is the only applicant I'd need a motion to appoint Melvin.
Some vote.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. McNally, you made it.
Wanted to get you before you left.
Next, the reports, resolutions of committees that turn to Commissioner Lutz in the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I bring Resolution 2017-49, which is the 2016-2017 amended Child Care Fund Annual Plan and Budget on the Probation Court. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Next, I bring Resolution 2017-50 to Hilda Brent Eastman from Corporation Council. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2017-51. It's the Civic Arena Munter Units from Recreations and Facilities for their repair. I move that resolution.
Support.
All in favor, discussion? Yes, Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Kristen, are we doing that in-house, or are we going outside for people to come in?
The answer is kind of both. What we do with the Munter's Unit is every other year, we bring a professional in from the company, and he does preventative maintenance, and then he does training with our staff. So he's going to come in, fine-tune to the bulk units, and then Steve, our maintenance guy, is going to be there with him, so he can learn and ask questions and handle all the little perks that happen throughout the year.
Yeah, I know that we've done that in the past. That's why I was asking that we, we kind of, it looks like we have a, a sequence of time where we're bringing these in.
Right, we decided to do it every other year.
Do they have service contracts that might, we might enter into that would maybe reduce some of the cost, or?
Not that I'm aware of, because this person comes in from Texas. So because it's so specific, the only, I mean, there's not just a whole bunch of people that work on the, on the machines. I know they start, they're going to start offering a training course out on the East Coast, honestly, it's like maybe Virginia or Pennsylvania or something like that, that we sort of were looking into as a possibility to get our staff a little bit more trained, but they don't have that up and running yet, so we don't really have any recommendation. But this guy is very specific to the unit.
Understand. Okay, thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Kristen, the train, with this, this training you're talking about, the, I mean, were you, I'm sure you do some kind of figures on it to make sure, you know, to see if it would be beneficial for us to spend the additional time. I mean, if we got that training, would we need them to come in every other year? I guess is my question.
Right, and I started asking those questions about what it all entails and what is different from having the guy come to us, and us going to the training site, and they couldn't really tell me. And so I've been trying to get more information out of them, because if it is something that's going to be beneficial for our staff, of course, we would like to do that. But they haven't given me enough to say, yes, this is going to be something we're spending money on.
I know, sometimes they keep those, those little secrets, sometimes they, just in case.
Right, especially because it's so far.
That's the bad, that's the downside.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Krieger.
Just so that you know, a lot of times, equipment's specific, so it may be difficult for them to get, you know, rate down to the nuts and bolts on the equipment that we have here versus going to some school that's going to have a model that's going to look somewhat like it, but not exactly the same equipment.
Right, and I know that's what they did in Texas, is they actually walk you through the plant, you know, so I don't know what the one on the East Coast is going to end up looking like, but I'm interested to know, and I'm on their email server, so we'll be finding out soon, I'm sure.
Okay. Again, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2017-52. It's the extension of contract with Constellation New Energy for Gas Transportation for buildings and grounds. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2017-53. It's a prescription for healthy eating grant application from the Health Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Mr. Strauss. We might know that we're not talking about pop and candy and chips and everything, but how is this going to help Bay County with this grant application?
Well, we tried to pilot a, we actually did pilot a similar program about two years ago with some funding via the state. However, in the middle of the year, the state took back some of those funds. This, so we weren't able to implement that program fully. This program really, really seeks to work with local area physicians and medical providers to identify a select number of individuals that they and their families would benefit from having a healthy diet. So with this, we'll be partnering with the, the farmer's market and the new indoor farmer's market, and providing some resources for families to meet the criteria there so that they can purchase fresh fruits and vegetables, not candy, pop, snack foods, things like that.
So these individuals, are they going to be given the names from the physician to county health? How, how are we going to find these people?
Essentially, what we're going to do is, we're going to do some outreach to some of the local area practices. We're going to try to implement this as well at the university clinic, at the Health Department.
How about a wellness center?
Yes, I, I think that's one of the individual names, or one of the practices on our list. If the provider agrees that they want to do this, it's not really, it's just a matter of, they just need to get the basic information and the provider and the referral forms. They will refer the person. We will do a short interview if we're funded, this is all happens if we're funded to do this, but for the person that is referred, we'll do a short interview with them, enroll them in the program, explain to them the rules of the program and what the benefits are, and then we take some basic information about health status and basically set them on their way. And hopefully, you know, with the guidance that they have from their physician and from us, they'll be able to incorporate healthy eating habits, and, and we're hoping to see better health status as a result.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All set? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, I bring Resolution 2017-54. It's a waiver of the adoption for the empty the shelter date from animal control. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2017-55, which is the motion for payables, general center regiions from the Finance Department. I move that resolution.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Support.
Support.
Support. Oh, receiving, I'm sorry. Wait.
You can.
I'm getting there. Where are we at? What do we want? Where am I at?
Just vote.
Pardon me?
Vote on 50.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes me a while sometimes, we'll get there though.
Next is Resolution 2017-56. It's the budget adjustments for Bay City TV, the Sheriff's Department, and the Child Care Fund. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2017-57. It's a point of sale in inventory software system for the Bay County Gulf Corps from the ISP. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have from Ways and Means.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz, from the Personnel and Human Services. Commissioner Ryder.
We have Resolution Number 2017-58, health-based software contract. We'll move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-59, vacancies. Will it move that forward?
Support. Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have before you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryder. Commissioner Duran, Durancheck, from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Resolution 2017-60, report of the county executive. Would you like to move this forward?
Forward. Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All I have, sir.
Thank you. Reports of the county officials, the county executives, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for the good work, especially the addition to Bay City TV in terms of the new equipment that they'll be utilizing as we hopefully carry the news to Bay County residents about what's happening in county government. But don't have a lot to report, but just want to remind everyone that Sunday is St. Patrick's Day. Bay County is registered for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we're Unit 7. So I'll be out there if any of the county elected officials, and especially the commissioners, want to join in walking the parade route. Hopefully, the weather's supposed to be a little warmer than it was today, the last few days, so hopefully it'll be a great celebration.
41, they say.
All set?
Yes.
Alrighty. Unfinished business, we have Resolution 2017-60, one. This is this resolution, it's the rescission of Resolution Number 2016-287, that was submitted by Commissioner Lutz. Let's move this thing forward, and then we'll talk about it. by Commissioner Lutz. Let's move this thing forward and then we're talking about it.
Okay. Now I'll make that motion to move Resolution 2017-61 forward.
Support.
Discussion.
Just a brief discussion. Originally back in, I believe it was November, we passed this Resolution 2016-287, which granted an easement for the city of Essexville at the water treatment plant. Since then, there's been a lot of discussion, and they are not going to need this easement, so therefore by rescinding it, we just leave all the properties the way they are, and nobody has any muddling of the paperwork in the future for land.
Just like it was before then.
Just kind of cleaning it up.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Miscellaneous, I have, you can, go ahead, Commissioner Duranchek.
Just last night, Frasier Township, I was at their meeting, and they approved our scrap tire pickup for the summer. And thank you, Rebecca, still here. Rebecca, thank you very much for doing the grant for a little bit extra. They didn't, we didn't have one up there last year, so really, they were really happy to do this again, so.
Sure. I bet they were.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else with any miscellaneous? I have one. This is telling, let you guys know, and everyone know, that starting next month, that the, our board meetings will be live streamed on Bay County TV. So not that, we don't do any editing anyways, like I said, so, you know, so at least for me, they'll be seeing my gaffs as they happen, and I'd have to wait a day or two, you know? So, yeah, it's perfect. So, so we'll all be, we'll all be live starting in April, and that's, and thanks to Nick back here, and he's their cameraman, and he does all, he does all the work. He tries to make us look as good as he can, and sometimes that's hard to do, especially with somebody like me, but he tries. So thanks, Nick. Okay. No more miscellaneous announcements. We just did this. The Behavioral Health Authority and the Region Seven, so we're going to skip that. In June, we have Library Board, one five-year term. October, Land Bank Authority, one local unit of government representative. Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. And Board of Campus, two four-year terms. That'll be in October. In December, we have Division on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in districts one, three, five, and seven. Ms. Amber, is there any need for a closed session today?
There certainly is, not, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.